Are we all here, right?
We're live.
We are live, gentlemen.
A statutory meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners dated October 5th, 2023, and reading as follows: The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a statutory meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 at 5:00 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Moyo.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here. All right, thank you for coming tonight. The meeting of the Board of Commissioners will come to order. Just a friendly reminder, please mute your cellphones if you would. And then we have need approval of the minutes of a previous meeting of 9:19:23.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, those who pass. And then we need approval of tonight's agenda. Oh, I did it. Well, we're not having the, we're not having the, thank you. No Commissioners workshop tonight because it's the compulsory or mandatory meeting from the state, so it would be the first Tuesday of November. With that, approval of tonight's minutes, or not minutes, but the agenda, I apologize.
I will make a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We do have an agenda, gentlemen. All right, presentation of written communications, communications received, communicated. Ashley?
There are five letters of communications received. There was one letter communication forwarded, and we have three sets of committees that sent in their minutes for approval.
All right, very good. I would need a motion to place and file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Reports of standing, statutory, special committees, and others. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Yes, we have Human Services Board sent in two months' worth of minutes, Pinecrest Board sent in three, and Public Health sent in August.
I would need a motion to place them on file.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion, any? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those have been placed on file. Very good. Public comment on agenda items, Mr. Gustafson, please.
Hi, my name is Gary Gustafson from Rapp River. I'd like to comment on the title 4D contract that's included in the agenda tonight. I spoke before on this, and I don't know if it's been signed yet or what you're going to be discussing about that tonight, but the truth is, is what's been going on is illegal, and it hasn't been okay for, it's never been okay. If you read the grant requirements, it says that there can't be any discrimination, and not even the judge is allowed to make discriminatory decisions. And there's separate federal law about federal funding when the court receives it, and it specifically states that the judge is not allowed to make discriminatory decisions or treat people differently. And when I'm called a noncustodial parent in the courtroom after receiving 50/50 legal custody, and I don't get given the same amount of parenting time, no matter how hard I fight or how many attorneys I hire, and I'm not given a reason as to why, and then I have to pay child support out of my VA disability, and they were taking a third, up to a third of my disability for a while. So, you know, I don't understand how that's fair and how I can be labeled a noncustodial parent and be treated differently and in a discriminatory fashion, in a punitive fashion. And I'm not given an attorney in a matter of life and liberty. The first attorney I've received was when I got $15,000 behind in child support, and they were going to prosecute me. So we had a contempt hearing, and I was given an attorney. And they decided I didn't have enough money for an attorney, but apparently I have enough money to pay all this money out of my VA disability for child support. And there's no allowances for veterans or anybody with disabilities, and the judge doesn't seem to care if we can pay our bills or not. I've brought budgets in, I've tried to work my bills out with the, with the court system. I let them know that I only receive a little over 100 a month for having, you know, each additional dependent, and the rest of my VA disability is for what a single veteran would normally receive. And anything under that amount puts me in a bad position. And I was threatened to be sanctioned if I use that defense ever again, and I have documents to prove that, so I'm not just saying that. I have been threatened to be sanctioned on multiple, multiple occasions, even though I'm representing myself, and I'm not an attorney, and I can't afford an attorney. So my kids can be taken from me, my money can, VA disability can, child support can be waged against it. And even though I'm completely disabled through the VA, I am not allowed an attorney. And I, when I defend myself and I lose, this is valid, this is okay, even though federal law says that we're not supposed to be discriminating and still accepting this money. It doesn't make any sense. And the county is liable because, Mr. Moyo, you're going to have to sign this grant, and our prosecuting attorney's going to have to sign it, and so is our circuit court judge, and they all attest to the fact that they're not making discriminatory decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public, excuse me, public comment on agenda items? I apologize. One last time, public comment on agenda items. That would be closed. Okay, very good. Let's start with the Administrator's report.
Today was the first day for our new airport manager. His name is Rob Randstadler. His day began with a planning meeting that included the FAA, MDOT, and our new and old airport consultants. This is a meeting where all individuals discuss the direction of the airport capital improvement plan, which is also known as ACIP or CIP. These are applicable for grant funding. We have, we will have another meeting in December to finally tune the ACIP plan for the next five years. Over at the airport, we're also keeping in mind that we're converting to the security identification display area, which you'll hear us reference as CIDA, clearance. We will be using our resources from the airport consultant, Meet and Hunt, and the FAA to determine if there are any grant funds available for this project. There are a lot of factors to make this determination. Yesterday evening, we had our first CRJ-700, which a lot of you have heard us say, the larger plane flying into the airport. The change in procedures with the aircraft went smooth, and I'd like to thank all the Delta County employees, Unifi, SkyWest, TSA, and the other individuals who were able to assist in the smooth transition in the very little time we had. Also, I requested the second tranche of $416,905.54 from the Department of Treasury for the local Assistant and Tribal Consistency Fund. This grant funding is a general enhancement program that provides additional assistance to eligible revenue-sharing counties to meet their jurisdictional needs. So overall, I am eager to begin this fiscal year 2024. Thank you.
I would need a motion to place this on file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? One from me, I can't speak for anybody on the board, but I think you did an outstanding job in taking care of the airport, and I'm very excited that we have a manager and assistant manager out there. Thank you for your extra work.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Okay, department updates.
Moyo's making her way.
I got her. Thank you. Welcome.
There's several things I want to provide you an update on related to the last meeting of September 19th. Most specifically, I wanted to bring to your attention two statutes related to the civil council, and my office's involvement is at civil council. First, MCL 49.71 essentially comes down to that this board, whenever the board determines a prosecutor attorney is unable to properly represent the county, you can appoint a new attorney. MCL 49.72 then says if you do such a thing of appointing a new attorney, the prosecutor is not involved anymore. So currently, as you have it, I'm, you have Mr. Graham, MMRA, and myself. That violates the statute. Further, there's case law as well as reading that first statute, 49.71, you must put on the record a reason for me not being civil counsel. I have yet to hear a reason for that. There is case law out of Wayne County as well as several other counties requiring that statement to be placed on the record. That can be done on an individual, case-by-case basis, or as a whole, but regardless, that reason needs to be placed on the record. I would note that this switch from the original, what was originally voted on, I believe, back at the beginning of September with the Order of Counsel has already created confusion, where I've had department heads and administration reach out with questions that I cannot answer, simply because I'm not in a position at that point to be civil counsel. I had the time and I had the opportunity at that time to answer those questions, but I was not able to due to that vote. I don't believe there's anything on the record at this point that says that my office is unable to, or unwilling to, or incapable of providing representation for this county. So I would like, I would like, and the statute requires, that you place on the record why we are no longer civil counsel. Looking at the Order of Counsel, I also have a significant concern regardless of what you decide related to civil counsel. Whether it's myself or Mr. Graham, when it comes to litigation, the first attorneys contacted should be our insurance attorneys. As someone who unfortunately gets frivolous lawsuits filed against her relatively frequently, and they're all handled and settled without payment, absent one, it highly concerns me that we would not be utilizing attorneys that are paid for as part of our insurance dues. As it stands right now, with Mr. Graham being the primary civil counsel, when it comes to litigation, should he determine he is going to keep that lawsuit, any payment, whether it's for his fees or any settlement or judgment that comes out of that lawsuit, would not come from MMRA, it would come out of the general fund for this county. You tack that on to what the civil, what the council fees are going to be for the day-to-day operations of this county, and that number becomes terrifying. I attempted to answer and address some of these concerns with you on September 19th, and albeit I was not here physically, I made it very well-known to each one of you that I would be available by telephone, and I had my chief assistant available for any and all questions. And when it was brought to your attention, I was not allowed to speak, not allowed to address your concerns, so I'm now providing that, addressing those concerns that you raised. Finally, related to rules and procedures that were also passed on September 19th, I want to bring a couple things to your attention in your own rules. First, the rule related to modifying those rules, which was done with the policy in order to remove individuals from the audience if the chair deems them out of order. That requires that this board presents in writing to all board members that change, amendment, or rescission 10 days prior to such a meeting. As far as I'm aware, that was not done. I would also point out to the rule regarding legal counsel, there is no mention of payment anywhere within that rule. As such, any contact, I believe, with Mr. Graham prior to him becoming civil counsel and done by individual board members violates that rule. There needs to be some transparency of what is being discussed with counsel to the extent that it can be done so, but when there are decisions and things that are going to be paid to be having opinions done, that needs to be something that's voted on by this board as a whole unless it comes down to the day-to-day operations of this county. I'm specifically concerned about the policy about removing public members. As it was noted by Administrator Young at the September 19th meeting, I had an idea, I have a policy. It's a policy that I believe aligns with what the intent behind the policy that was passed is, but it was never allowed to be presented to you. A meeting was canceled, and I was promised, promised, that because I was not going to be able to be here on the 19th, it would not be discussed. And yet it was discussed, it was passed, and I believe it puts this county in a highly vulnerable position for litigation. The policy that I have drafted comes from a variety of policies across the state that have withstood, withstood litigation, and also provides the same information for this board to make a decision whether an audience member is so out of order or constitutes a breach of peace, but also allows the audience members to understand what their expectations are. It aligns with everything that this, the Open Meetings Act allows for while still allowing you control over what is occurring in this room. In conclusion, I'm providing this update because I'm highly concerned about what occurred on September 19th for a variety of reasons. It's not lost on me that that was a meeting I could not be at, when on September 5th, when similar questions were raised about civil counsel, and I was here, I was able to address them. I would hope that the county can make the right decision for its employees related to the Order of Counsel, but regardless, a decision about civil counsel needs to be made because as of now, it does not align with, align with statute. Should you choose not to use our office's services, we would not be accepting the $12,000 stipend, as it's not something that we'd be providing services to this county, and I don't feel that's right to accept money for something we are not doing. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's the conclusion of my update.
Gentlemen, any questions, please? Lots, but I'm going to wait. Barron? Strowner?
The only thing I would like is them MC Michigan Plaid Law.
I can send you the statutes.
I would like what you talked about today so I can have a chance to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
And answer questions as constituents would get ahold of me on what you talked about because it was a lot to digest right now.
Understood.
I too would like them, please.
I can send them out to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other department head updates, please? Nancy, I'm sorry, Nancy.
That's okay. Delta County Clerk, and I just wanted to give you an update on, we had a training at Eskenaba City Hall this morning from the Bureau of Elections, actually, it was about four and a half hours long, in the Bureau of Elections, and they don't come here real often, so it was, it was, you know, good to be able to attend that meeting. It had to do with Proposal 2 of 2022, which has created a lot of changes to election law, biggest one being early voting. That's also going to be the most expensive one, so it was good to get some answers. They're getting closer and closer to having answers about a lot of the election changes. They had to go through this whole process. The laws were actually approved in July, and so it took six to seven months to get those laws through the state legislature, having to do with the constitutional changes from 2022. And now the Bureau of Elections has been working on, on how, how we handle that and the, that we'll have to follow per the legislature. So, so it was a, it was a great update as to what's taking place, but there are going to be a lot of changes and a lot of money spent on the early voting.
Nancy, I got a question for you.
Sure.
On a lot of the township meetings I go to, about half of them say that you have to have a camera.
Yes, for the drop boxes.
For the drop box. And some of the clerks were saying that they had to pay for them, other ones were saying that the state was going to reimburse them for them.
Yes, the state does have a program for reimbursing security cameras.
So everything will be reimbursed to the townships.
For the, for that particular thing that's specific for the early voting, they have $30 million, but that will be spread across the state. But on, on drop boxes in particular, they will cover 100% of those costs. So that will, I'm not sure if that comes out of that 30 million that they have, but they will be paying for the security cameras for the drop boxes. They'll pay for the drop boxes and the security cameras. They're supposed to be paying for the extra equipment that were required. In Delta County, we've decided to have one polling location, we'll have two tabulators there because we have 22 precincts. And so we're going to split it into two, two precincts at the same, it's going to be at Wells Township, and it will be nine days of early voting. So the state is going to try to cover that voting equipment, reimburse the county for it, and provide the laptops for the e-poll books, and, and then after that, they're going to try to help pay for some of the other costs, the election workers, all the ballot containers, there's a lot of stuff that goes with that.
One of the townships said that they're even going to pay for mileage on for some of the townships because they got to come, round trip's going to be over 100 miles.
Election for the clerks to come. Well.
And their workers.
Well, they're going to, they're going to pay up to $15 an hour for election workers, but like I said, it's, it's a pot of $30 million, and once they pay for the voting equipment, then it'll be divvied up for election workers. So if they have anything left after the voting equipment, then they'll pay, and they said that they're not going to be able to make everybody 100%.
Could you give me a list of the stuff they're going to pay so I could tell the townships that are worried that they're going to have to pay for it? They don't have to.
Well, I can, but I, I don't even know if the state knows exactly what they're paying for. There are certain things they, they are going to pay for, like the drop boxes.
Okay.
That was something that's already been determined, but as far as the early voting, they're going to pay for postage for AV ballots, so they'll pay for that, for people to return their AV ballots. I think the townships are required to pay for, to send the ballots out, but for it to get sent back, the state is going to pay for the voters to send their AV ballots back. So, you know, it's, it's a whole mixture of what they're going to pay for, and, and they're hoping to pay for as much as they can, but they know it's, they're not going to be able to pay for everything. But we've, what we've decided with our plan in Delta County is we'll take that, whatever the costs are at the end that the state doesn't cover, and we'll divide it up amongst the cities and townships. We have 16 jurisdiction, jurisdictions, and we have 22 precincts, so we'll have to decide whether we're going to divide it up by jurisdiction or by precinct and split those costs. It's still going to be a lot less than what it would be individually for each and every, you know, for Fairbanks to have early voting for nine days, to pay election, three election workers $15 an hour for nine days, you know, the cost would just be undoable, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Mr. Chair, can I ask?
Please, please, sir.
Is this just for the national election? Is there any talk about the local election having the 90s? Because I know that's an option. I mean, what's your, what's your insight on that?
Well, the state, state and federal elections will be required to have the nine-day early voting on the local, like school elections. Yep. And city council elections, that kind of thing. It is an option, we can do that, but we're not required.
Okay, but I mean, once you decide to do it one time, can you go back and forth saying this time we're going to do nine days, next time we're not going to do? Is there a regulation on that?
It's only required for the federal and state elections. So this coming year, we're going to, we're possibly going to have four elections, we'll have the presidential primary, we will have to have nine days of early voting for that because it's a federal election. In May, looks like a recall election, that one we're not required, so we probably won't have nine days early. In, in August and November, those are both state and federal elections, so we will have nine days of early voting on those two elections.
And to follow up on that, what is that item that talks about 29 days early voting? What does that pertain to? Are you familiar with that?
Yes, it can be up to 29 days of early voting for the.
Who's option?
It's an option on the non-federal elections. On the non-federal, we're required to do nine days.
City council?
City, could do 29 days of early.
Who makes that decision at each election is what I'm trying to get.
The local, the local jurisdictions, and there was talk downstate of, of some of the jurisdictions down there doing the 29 days, but then when they looked at it, they thought, well, if everybody else is doing eight, we're not going to do 29. So at this point, I mean, nine, not eight, nine. So at this point, everyone's decided to do the nine days of early voting on the federal elections.
But each township can make up their own decision on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's very complicated.
Yes, it'll be complicated, and it would be very expensive, especially for townships.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any?
Nancy, you made comments about the state paying for different aspects of that. There's a tendency for people to make a disconnect. All that money comes from each and every one of us here, regardless if it's from.
It's all taxpayer money, yes. It is all taxpayer money, so it is coming out of all of our pockets, yes. Anything else?
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Any other department head updates? General orders of business, unfinished business, we have the North Care Network Grants.
This is a liquor tax request that we send out every year. It helps to provide funding for rigorous, high-quality program for participants as they work through the process of becoming drug and/or alcohol-free. District Court has increased the request, and the reason for their increase was to expand this program for additional participants. So far, it, they usually have 10 to 15 participants that are waiting to join the drug court. So I'm looking for approval to send for this request.
Is that money to support the program?
Correct.
Make a motion that we ask Ashley to apply for that grant.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, support by Commissioner View, additional discussion.
We usually get that grant, you know?
Yes, we get that grant year after year. However, we've always asked for additional funding, but usually the only award is $40,000, but.
Well, let's hope we can get the additional funding.
Right, it is definitely needed.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. New business, payment of bills.
Payment of bills. I move we pay our bills. Oh, excuse me.
Let me say my little line.
Better get that amount first.
Whatever.
I've examined, I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following, and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is $1,720,748.31. Commissioner expenses, $547.99.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barron to pay the bills.
Support.
Support by Commissioner View, additional discussion. Roll call, clerk, please.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyo?
Yes.
Our bills are paid. 2023 Mileage and Portment Report. I'm sorry, Milage, not Mileage. Milage and Portment Report, 2023.
At least we'll present that to you.
Thank you. Welcome.
The, all mileage reports have been received back from all the jurisdictions and have been submitted to the state. The county on the winter tax bills under the extra voted is 3.15 mils, which is the law enforcement, community action agency, 911 and recycling, and then the jail. law enforcement, community action agency, 911 and recycling, and then the jail bond. The extra voted will bring in $4,365,405.33. The jail bond will collect $997,806.93.
Questions, gentlemen? We, thank you for your service. We need a motion, obviously, to accept this, yes?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Move by Commissioner Melner?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. All those in favor of accepting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, healthcare, hard cap resolution.
Commissioners in front of you, is the same resolution that has been approved in the past. However, it was brought to my attention and requested from the employees of Delta County to look at other options. So I am requesting to you to table this item until October 17th for me to be able to discuss these options with the appropriate committees and individuals if necessary.
We need a motion to table.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron to table this till the 17th of October.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson, additional discussion.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like a listing of all the options you checked into to be sent to the board for each variation that you're looking at, so that we can see what's, what's going on.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tabled. Okay, item number four is the DHHS contract, the child support services.
One moment, please.
That's all right.
Okay. This grant program is focused to initiate and carry out proceedings to enforce child support payment orders and to establish and maintain support orders regarding custody, quarantine time, healthcare coverage, and other relevant, relevant child support topics. And we are looking for approval of signature. This is, grant is signed by the prosecuting attorney, the circuit court judge, and the chair.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion, gentlemen?
Yep. Was this what one of the constituents talked about, about the Title IV deal?
I believe this is what Mr. Gustafson was talking about, yeah.
Yes.
And should we have any concerns about what he talked about? I'm asking the administrator that we don't discriminate or anything, or, or is there any evidence of that on? I mean, because I, I'm not familiar a lot with this, so I want to make sure we got our bases covered.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so nobody's aware of anything that is being done inappropriately on discrimination, I guess, is what he talked about?
Correct.
And, and we've done this for many years? Every year?
Yes.
Do we do the same thing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, gentlemen, all those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. All right, per diem would be the next discussion. I will lead off with it. I, I simply wanted to start looking at developing a policy for not just this board, but for future boards. And commissioners should be paid for the meetings that he or she goes to. Right now, I think we only get, if you go to more than three a day, you only get paid for that?
Fifty bucks.
Yeah, well, I, I think if you're, some of you guys can't get at your jobs because of, or have to take time off for your jobs. Yes, what I want to do is make sure that we have a policy that would address that, as well as if the commissioner wants to bill the county for something that he was not assigned to, it still could be a good idea, but we need, we need some kind of check and balance thing there. So it would be maybe the administrator, something like that. This is just kicking this around, but I would welcome your input on the issue of per diem. Anybody with anything, or is there was even talk of, of increasing the out-of-town travel? But I'd welcome, if anybody's willing to discuss it, fine. If not, we'll sit right where it's at.
I guess the only thing that I would say is that I agree with you. If we go to three meetings or four meetings a day, we should get paid for each meeting. But as far as increasing our, our per diem, the, the value of our per diem, I don't think that's good. But I think when we go out of town, or when we have three, four, five meetings in one day, which I, I've had a couple of four, but we get our $20 or whatever it is for, for the whole meeting, for all four meetings.
Sure.
Commissioner Moyle, could I make a comment?
Please.
It was brought to my attention by the Board of Commissioners Secretary that not only is the per diem for your rates, but it's also for all boards. So it would be our advisory board, our dispatch board, any boards that has other constituents. So just so you're realizing, it doesn't only affect the five here.
So in other words, if another board had more than three meetings, which is...
Highly unlikely, correct.
Yeah.
But if you're increasing the actual rate itself, I just wanted, to let you all to be aware, she asked me to present that, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think any rate increases per meeting should be, I think that, that should go on. If we do anything, we should put on that for the next board coming in.
Could two of us get together and hammer out some kind of policy? I just want to make sure that we have something moving forward. But if, if you're not passionate about it, we can just leave it.
No, I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, please.
I think it affects every board member differently, depending on what their assignments are and their work schedule. I, I would really like to see this become, go through the Personnel Committee and the Finance Committee after the Personnel Committee looks at it with legal help if needed to hone in and get institutional standards from other counties and stuff like that to see how they have progressed, or if they stayed stagnant over the last 20-some years, like I heard we have been. So I just thought it would be something that, moving forward with, and, and if we don't act on it, we don't. But I, and I'm not worried about getting it done today.
Let's refer to the Personnel Committee for starters.
Right.
And then once you guys bring back to the board, we'll go from there.
Well, we need to do a little research and have some input from the, from other areas, is what I'm looking at.
How about if we table, excuse me, table this till the first meeting in November, when we can talk about in Commissioners Workshop?
If, if the Personnel Committee wants to take up the issue prior to that, that's fine.
Well, that, and that's what I'm thinking. That gives the Personnel Committee to work on it. That'll give the Finance Committee time to get it in, and we can come with a, a better understanding of what other counties are doing and where we should be at.
We don't even need a table. It'll just take no action, and so...
Okay.
Okay, very good. Next item would be the civil attorney's stipend increase. Ashley?
What is that?
I think it's an issue of like...
So this is...
Two cents or five cents or something, or...
Um, this civil attorney stipend increase went from $6,000 and passed to $12,000 in this budget year. However, as prosecuting attorney Wickman has stated, she no longer would want the $12,000 if the commissioners decide not to utilize her services prior to gram, as her department had.
You know, myself, I think it's a big mistake to what happened on September 19th, and we should go back to where we had it, as we can go to the prosecutor first. Because like she was, like prosecutor was saying, some of the people are asking her advice, and she can't give it the way we have it set up right now.
Mr...
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I, my comment on this is, she did give us a presentation today. I would like to take that information and digest it and see what it actually entails, and then have this item reoccur on the next agenda for the next meeting. I, I really want to see what she's talking about, and it, a lot of it scares me as far as our liability later on, dependent on the cases. And I think we deserve that to our legal department to at least look at what she wrote and talked about today.
I have no problem considering any of that.
I would, I would support that, too.
I'll make that a motion.
What's your motion?
To table it till we get the information from the Lauren, our prosecutor, so that we can oversee what she's talking about and come back with our comments at the next meeting. Pretty simple.
If you, if you want some time to look at what she's gonna send you...
Always, I always need time to look at what, what's being presented to me. Quickly like that.
I guess I gotta state for the record, I, I don't have a problem with any of this, but this was not a rejection of any personality, anybody's ability. We were the only county in the state that I know of with resources that was using its prosecutor as its legal counsel. And I, I was worried about conflict of interests coming back to possibly snake the county. There's no, there's no rebuke of anybody, and I certainly, the terms that were unwilling, unable, or incapable, I never thought that, never, still don't. And so you, you have a motion to table this until...
Well, we need to, to review the information that was given us.
I need a support on that.
I'll support.
Move by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner, to table this until additional information can be obtained. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. All right, the chief assistant prosecutor and the assistant prosecutor salary increases.
Prosecuting attorney Wickman, would you mind coming up and explaining the different salary increases? Thank you. This was a part of our budget presentation, and we're just bringing it out so it's just an item on the agenda. So when we look back five to 10 years from now, we can easily find this, so it's not buried in the budget.
It's already passed, though, correct?
We approved it as a budget, but we just want to explain to Ashley what had happened. Thank you.
Good idea.
So I went to, it, it started earlier this year, but at the end of August, I actually went to the PACPAM, the Prosecutor Association Conference, out on Mackinac Island. And one of the big topics of discussion is not only recruitment for attainment of prosecutors across the state, it is a statewide problem. When I looked this morning, there was approximately 40 open entry-level prosecutor positions across the state. That's about half the counties. And most of them, if not all of them, pay substantially more than what our, our salary was for last fiscal year. I can tell you from what I started as an assistant prosecutor, December of 2016, so going on seven, seven years, it has only gone up $4,000 in seven years. So it, it is a significant concern that we can't compete with the rest of the counties out there. Dickinson County at this point, obviously very close, very similar demographics to what Delta County has, both from size as well as the number of prosecutors, recently had their assistant salary. So their entry level, you know, one to two years, if any experience, they're actually considering somebody who has not even passed the bar exam yet at $80,000. I'm simply asking for it to go up, and I apologize, I don't have those notes on what the final number was that we decided to, 82,000. About 82 is for chief assistant.
Right. Chief assistant.
Okay, so 70,000. I can supplement with the funding that I bring in through the civil council contract for the city of Esconaba for doing their ordinances, to fit the right person, rather than having a one-size-fit-all. Somebody who applies, who has more experience, we can compensate that using that funding that doesn't come out of the county's budget directly. And then to equal that out essentially, where our assistant prosecutor salary currently is below, or, excuse me, our chief assistant salary is currently below what most assistants are making in the state. So I'm trying to put her at a competitive position as well, because obviously you don't want your third in line to be paid more than your second in line. So I'm asking for her salary to be bumped up to about the $82,000 mark to compensate for that. The other portion of this for recruitment purposes is, right now, we're up against, and I saw it later on your agenda, the MIDC contract. Defense attorneys right now are getting paid, they get paid more than I do. And they, they usually work about three-quarters of the time, of the amount of time I put into it. They're getting paid more than my chief assistant and what would ultimately be my assistant salary. That's causing some of the recruitment issues and why there are so many opportunities available across the state. I can tell you, seven years ago, or eight years ago, when I took the bar exam, I had no hope of getting a job as a prosecutor right out of law school. It took me a year to find a job, and even then, it was because I'd already made connections in Delta County. So it is a tough road to find somebody for our office, and at least putting these salaries to what I've requested them makes us competitive with the rest of the market. Yes?
Excuse me. That seems to be the theme we have throughout this whole county, and fortunately, and we, we are trying to address that. I don't disagree with you at all that, that your wages should be, you know, up competitive. I guess I'm just making the statement that, that, yes, we, it, this is, we had it with the airport, and we've had it with other things, and part-time assistance, and I believe in the court. We had to up theirs just recently. We were trying to hire $12 an hour for part-time, no benefits. So, yeah, I don't disagree with you that we've gotta up these wages throughout.
It definitely seems to be a county-wide concern at this point. I would very much agree.
And recruiting is a, is a nationwide...
Absolutely.
...concern.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a comment.
Please.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the information you gave us prior to the budget session, the, the whole commission voting unanimously agreeing with what you presented, and then giving it your presentation today for the public to understand what actually is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'd also like to note those numbers. It was, the chief assistant was $82,771. And, I'm sorry. The assistant prosecutor was $67,794, so just shy of 70.
We don't need any action on this one.
Um, yes, I'd like a motion on this, just to make sure it's on the record, and we can easily...
I will make the motion that we put this on record.
Move by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This is on record.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Now, we have a bunch of appointments to different boards. These, this is just the way this came out. I, I had heard some people express concerns about why so many, and it's just the way it come out in the wash. Do you take one of these things one at a time, or how do you, what is your, what's the idea?
We have to do one at a time.
Okay, very good. We have appointment to the data board. We have two openings.
Correct. And we received a letter from Eric Buckman to be reappointed to the data board.
Right.
So we have one opening position for there. So we just need an improvement for reappointment for...
When is that position? I'm, I'm, excuse me.
October.
That's fine. Go ahead.
October.
All right, so...
I'll, I'll move that we accept his continuation of supporting the Coney and Gladstone on the data board.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner View.
I'll support that.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have one opening on that board. Okay, the appointment to the human ser...
There's two openings.
Oh, no, whatever. We have to fill one.
We have to fill one.
Okay, yeah, we got, okay. All right, the appointment to the human services board, we have one opening.
Correct. And we have a request for reappointment by Mary Olson.
Okay. I would need a motion to reappoint Mary Olson.
I'll make that motion.
Support by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion. All those in favor of reappointing Mary Olson to this board signify by saying aye.
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 That, thank you, Mary. All right. Appointment to the soldiers and sailors relief commission, okay.
So this individual is appointed by the probate court judge. However, we have always done in the past that the Board of Commissioners accepts this recommendation, or this appointment. And the individual is David Wilson, that the judge Lund is appointed to this position.
So we need a motion to accept Judge Lund's...
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
I would say, move by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner View, to accept the judge's appointment to this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, very good, Mr. Wilson, thank you. Okay, so we have appointments to the building authority. We have five openings.
Correct. We received two reappointments, and we also will have three vacancy, one had declined... We received two reappointments, and we also will have three vacancy, one had declined. This committee, if you are not aware, this one was used for proceeds of the courthouse upgrade bonds. This group has not met in the past few years, so we have the Tom Pierre Larryo and Larry Johnson that are requesting to be back onto the board. However, we have three vacancies, so if anybody's willing to...
So I need a motion to get Tom and Larry back on the board, and then we'll fill the other three as they come.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner View.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your service again for going back on that board. Appointment to the Elections Canvassers Board, we have two openings.
We have two openings.
This one's handled a little bit differently. The Democratic Party and the Republican Party each nominate three people to fill that position. We have to fill one Democratic slot and one Republican slot, so you have to choose one out of each of those two people.
And the people nominated for the Republican candidates are LeAnn Omen, Seema Deeds, and Teresa Evans, so you would choose one of those. And then for the Democratic candidate on the Board of Canvassers, it's Teresa Nelson, Dan Young, or Monica Peach.
Pass it over to you.
Yeah, pass it over to me. Make sure you vote for one in each, each of those.
Kind of a neat way to do it.
Okay, so for the Republican candidate, it will be Seema Deeds, and for the Democratic candidate, it will be Teresa Nelson. However, the other four people will be alternates to that board, so we have two new candidates for the Board of Canvassers. And they'll have a lot to learn.
Yes.
I would need a motion to finalize this.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for your service to those boards. Appointment to the Board, we have two openings.
Yes, and both Debbie or DeeDee Anderson-Skratsky and Brian Hero are looking for reappointment to the Airport Board Advisory.
I will make a motion that we accept those.
I'll support that.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Brian and DeeDee, thank you. Okay, appointment to the Construction and Zoning Board of Appeals, we have three openings.
We have three openings with three individuals that are looking for reappointment, Dennis Ness, John Denholm, and Larry Johnson.
I'd make a motion that we accept those three appointments.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Melner, additional discussion. All those in favor of reappointing these gentlemen to the board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, gentlemen, thank you. Alright, so we have the appointment to the Board of Health, one opening.
This individual is a member-at-large for the Board of Health. It was brought to my attention later this evening, this afternoon, that the member-at-large that Delta County nominates is a three-year term. We typically have approved it as one year at a time, so this individual will be on his second term, because he was appointed last year, so I'm looking for approval from the board for the remainder two years.
Who is he?
I'll make a motion to...
Tom Tred...
Okay, that's our board chair right now, so...
Yes.
I'll support Mr. Melner.
Motion by Commissioner Melner, support by Commissioner View, additional discussion.
That's just for two years now.
Correct. It's a three-year term, he's already one in, one year into that two, three-year term.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, that would carry. Appointment to the Land Bank, two openings.
The two openings are requesting reappointment is Thomas Saber and Eric Bessinon.
I'll make a motion to accept those two.
I'll support them.
Moved by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for, last one is the Appointment to the Planning Commission, we have two openings.
Two individuals that are seeking reappointment is John Denholm and Amy Bergland.
I'll make a motion to accept those two.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Melner, support by Commissioner Peterson, or by the... Excuse me? Okay, by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John and Amy, for your service there. MIDC grant.
We have been awarded the MIDC grant, and the total amount is, requested funds is $721,283.23. I'm looking for approval of that award, and signature for authorization for Commissioner Moyle to sign.
I would make the motion that we accept that.
MIDC stands for Michigan Indigenous Defense Council.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Peterson?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion.
Can you, can you tell us where that money's gonna be spent, real briefly?
So we have a corrections officer that is a court liaison, so he will administer transportation and schedule meetings with court-appointed attorneys. And then we also have...
From the jail, you mean?
From the jail.
Okay.
And then we also have numerous court-appointed attorneys that we just approved the contract language last meeting for. We also have a lead attorney, so she obviously manages all the attorneys.
Thank you.
Yep.
All those in favor of accepting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would be accepted. General public comment. If anybody wishes to address the board, general public comment, please. Simply state your name and go from there.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Allettenhofer with U.P. Whitetails Association. I am also the crazy guy that signed the contract to make that grant available for the Delta County Forest, which actually takes and gives me more work this winter and next spring, and continued on for years to come. And I am very happy to say that Mother Nature was very nice to us out there. We have some beautiful reforestation in forest, the work that was done come out excellent. The thought right now is, we are looking at doing a little bit of frost seeding, depending on Mother Nature, of course, this coming spring. We also have, with all the growth that's going on, we are gonna have a little bit of, let's say, crowding on our trails and stuff, so we may have to do a little bit of thinning alongside the trails, and depending on old man winter, and how much heavy snow we get, the little poples and stuff that come in and cover the trail and stuff, we'll have to trim those. And my thought on that is that we actually look into the rabbit hat, rabbit habitat grants, and we could probably kill two birds with one stone here. We can get a little extra funding to help us out with these projects, and actually increase the rabbit population out there as well. With the cover we have, we don't have to worry too much about the raptors, because we can't see them, it's so thick. It's great, it really is. But we are gonna have a problem, I'm sure, with the coyotes and other fur bearers, but the coyote, well, the overall fur market is nil right now, as most use nil. It's nonexistent. When they only get seven dollars for a hide, most of the guys aren't even going out with all the work. Actually, a little bit advertisement here, I am gonna try and get a coyote hunt going this year in Delta County, and try to relieve our wildlife population a little bit there. But we have a lot of work to do, and I'd like to keep you advised of that, of course, and your positions, and thank you for actually going forward and getting that fourteen hundred acres. I worked with the, at that time, the director, Keith Cray, who was a good friend and a great supporter of the Upper Peninsula, and I promised him I'd stay involved. So I'm involved, to say the least, okay? And we'll do our best to make that available for the people of the Upper Peninsula, and anybody that wants to visit us.
Thank you.
We appreciate your continued involvement in that, thank you very much.
You bet.
Alright, general public comment, please. Anybody wishes to address the boards, simply state your name, and you may address the board. General public comment.
Hello again, Gary Gustafson from Rapid River. Ashley, now you said that there, you don't, aren't aware of any discrimination going on in the courtroom in Delta County, and you're upstairs, that's downstairs, I've never seen you in that courtroom, so I believe that. You probably haven't seen any, but for you to speak on that, and Steve to just, you know, for you just to say, Ashley, why don't you look at my, you know, it's public record, why don't you go into my file, and why don't you look and see what's been done to me? And do your research before you vote on things, because right now, I'm holding everybody accountable at this point, now that this new grant has been signed. I'm going to the state police this week, I'm gonna start filing complaints with the Michigan State Bar, with the Judicial Tenure Commission, and with Civil Rights Commission, possibly the Department of Justice, or anybody that will listen. There's a good chance I might start organizing informational protests outside of the courthouse, because I'm not alone in this. Yes, discrimination is occurring, I have hardcore evidence, documented proof, that it has happened to me, and there are probably thousands of other people in this county that'll say the same thing. So if you wanna put your name on that, and say that there's no discrimination going on, Dave, good luck again. And that goes to our prosecuting attorney as well, good luck, and to our judge, good luck, because what's going on is illegal, it's discriminatory, and it's wrong. And Ashley, I would appreciate, from now on, if you don't actually have information on a topic that is valid, and it's something that's not just your opinion, please don't speak on it, because they're gonna listen. Thank you. Oh, and one other thing, is the state of Michigan is rewriting the laws and the rules on handicapped accessibility on state trails, and so this would apply to Cornell State Forest. The Wildlife Division and the Trails Division are currently working on new policies, because they're not in compliance with the ADA law, I've been working on that for some time, so when they get their policies rewritten to allow for accessibility for OPMDs and PMDs for people with handicaps and disabilities, I will let you know, and I expect the Cornell Forest to comply. Thank you.
General public comment? General public comment? Anybody, general public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to commissioners' concerns. Mr. Peterson?
I had a few things that I was gonna bring up tonight, but I'm waiting for a little more information. Hopefully, I'll have it for next meeting. I guess the only other thing I'll say is, last week, I was down in Kalamazoo for Michigan Association of Counties. I went to several breakout sessions. One of them was on roads, one was on election laws, the new election laws. And the other one, one of the ones that I thought, felt was important, but at this point, I can't remember it. It was, it was very, very good conference. I learned a lot talking to other county commissioners, and I... Thank you, that's all.
Commissioner View?
Thank you. First off, the county board has the final say, and all funds will be spent with the opioid. I have been in contact with, since I made an announcement a couple meetings ago, tremendous response for people wanting to be part of some type of steering committee or advisory board, to let us know the best needs in the community. I would like to get started on that. I think I mentioned before, I'd like to meet with Ashley, and any other commissioner, one other commissioner that would like to meet. To get this moving forward, I have a lot of information from Mac, that lady's coming up here on the nineteenth. She's willing to meet with us, or with just me, I, it doesn't matter to me, individually, I can't do nothing anyways, but if I can get some information so that we can get this going, they really have a master plan that's been working with all the other counties. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. The other thing is, overall, the constituents have been great, whether their comments have been negative, or personal, stuff like that. That type of involvement is important for me, to make me better. But one thing I have to say is, we have a tremendous amount of talent and good staff and employees in our county, and I rely on them. When they tell me something, until I'm proven wrong down the line, because I just can't check into everything. So I just wanted to get that out there, just to tell people why I vote the way I do after I ask questions. We believe in each other, I think that's important. The other thing is, at the last meeting, I talked about the VSO department, Veteran Service Officer, I talked about a secretary for him. I did have some comments after that, that maybe we should look into that, and maybe a part-time VSO officer training or something. I think the board would be probably willing to go forward with some smaller steps in getting him some more help outside of a secretary. I'm not positive, but I'm willing to sit in on any meetings that Ashley can have with him, with Dave Zier, is it, our Veteran Service Officer? And anyone else that's willing to give me input from the public, give it to me, because personally, and I, and I can't say things personally will happen, I would like to give him everything he needs. But if we can start out with a game plan that over the next five years, he has everything he needs and beyond, that would be great. And I had a lot more to say, but I'm not gonna, but the main thing tonight is, we have three people that are going through the graduation of the Ninety-fourth District Court Drug and Sobriety Court. That is Thursday, October twenty-sixth, 5:00 p.m., in the Delta County Circuit courtroom. I'm just giving it to yous, because their testimonies and their journeys are amazing. I didn't make it to the last one, but I made it to the one prior to that. And I do plan on going to this one, if everything falls into place, and it's very uplifting. Everybody in the county, somewhere, somehow, has been touched by, by drug abuse, our whole city, everything. So just remember, October twenty-sixth, 5:00 p.m., we can listen to three people that have successfully completed the program. Thank you.
Mr. Melner?
I just want, have one thing, and ask to welcome the new airport manager. If he has any questions, he can always call me or anybody else on the board, so that's it.
Commissioner Barron?
I have a couple quotes and a comment. The, this is from Alexander Solchnitchin. "Human beings are born with different capacities. If they are free, they are not equal, and if they are equal, they are not free." Another one is from Booker T. Washington. "The lie doesn't become truth, wrong doesn't become right, and evil doesn't become good, because it's accepted by a majority." I think we should recognize and have sympathy with this horrendous attack that took place in Israel, these butchers that massacring women and children in the name of a lie.
Nancy? Ashley? Alright, just again welcoming our new airport, off to Ashley for out there, and... and stepping up to the plate. We have a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on 10/17 at 5:15. There's one on 11/7 at 5:00 o'clock, that's Commissioners' Informational Workshop, and a regular Commission... Of appointments, I don't believe so, so I would entertain a move to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, leave, thank you.